Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alonian Moors Parade in Monte, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 108, Class 108. What did we learn in Class 107? Well, we were taking a deeper dive, right? We were starting to learn a little bit more about what the United States of America and the United States Intergovernmental Organization was talking about in their Declaration of Intervention, right? In their Declaration of Intervention that they wrote on behalf of Ukraine versus Russia, they had a sub-part within that Declaration of Intervention where they was talking about the difference in the definition of genocide. And while they were trying to break down the definition of genocide, they said, well, genocide is broke down into two parts, whole or in part. So as the United States started to break down the word "in part", because they were coming up with internal definitions of the word genocide, right? That now allowed the Moors to understand the mindset of the United States as it relates to the word "in part". So as we started to examine, right, and use forensics to look into what they call "in part", it caused the Moors to go back and look at history, because law and history goes together, right? So when looking at the law and history, what the Moors have now discovered is that Mohammed V, in an act of genocide and an act of opportunity to undermine the Moors, they put together arrangement, the King Morocco and Mohammed V put together arrangement with the United States of America and the United States Intergovernmental Organization, right? In order to throw the Moors underneath the bus. So more specifically, in the Madrid Convention of 1880, Article 15, it starts to talk about who? Moors subjects, but who are Moors subjects? Well, now you go down to the footnote of that document, that PDF of the treaty, the United States put footnotes in that says, well, these Moors subjects are actually who? Moroccans. So therefore, the United States of America in an act of genocide, right, complicitly to commit genocide, or their attempt to commit genocide in whole or in part, Mohammed V now agrees to throw the Moors underneath the bus. So while Mohammed V is declaring his independence, because he got tired of being colonized by France, he finally gets rid of France out of their lives of Mohammed V. And they turn around and throw the Moors deeper into colonialism, right? So Mohammed V wants independence, but yet he left the Moors to deal with this calamity on their own, right? Now, why is it that Mohammed V did that? Let's talk about that. See, we can't blame this squarely on Mohammed V. Why do I say that? Because what Mohammed V did was between the year 1956 and 1959, but let's back up a little bit. The Sultan signed the Treaty of Madrid in 1880 that gave the Moors an opportunity to return to Morocco through acts of what? An application to now try to come back to a Moroccan government. But the Moors didn't do it after 1880. Then in 1906, the Sultan put together a treaty of 1906 that now brought the Moors back into government if the Moors would have been woken up. But don't think the Moors wasn't woke at that time. Moors knew they were Moors, but nobody stepped up, because Moors acquiesced. They sold out after 1906. So therefore, since the Moors had come back into government in 1906, then France takes over in 1912 through the Treaty of Fès, 1912. Now, France is responsible for running the empire and also responsible for waking up the Moors, getting into cooperation with the Moors to run the government. So France didn't do it, and neither did the Moors. So now you look up after 1906 and 1912, what's next? Now, basically, let's kind of fast forward to the Charter of the United Nations. Charter of the United Nations came out in 1945. They gave Moors an opportunity to declare their own independence, right? In the Charter of the United Nations, right, Article 1, Section 2, it says all about self-determination. And the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, Article 55, gave the Moors an opportunity to declare their self-determination. Go look it up. You'll see the word "self-determination" in Articles 1 and Article 55. Then the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, Article 73, talked about non-self-governing territories. That was the opportunity under Article 73 for Moors to come back into government based on their own human rights. So after 1945, the Moors still had not made or declared their independence. Next, you know what's happening. 1950 to 1952 comes. France takes the United States of America to court from 1950 to 1952. Now, the judgment comes out in 1952 of France versus United States of America that talked about who? Moors subjects. It talked about constant jurisdiction. It talked about the Moors treaties. So after that judgment came out in 1952, did the Moors wake up then and declare independence? No. So by the time Mohammed V finally got his independence away from France in 1956, four years after the France versus United States of America case came out, four years later, Mohammed V now gets his independence. So from 1880 all the way to 1956, the Moors had ample opportunities to declare their independence and reestablish their own Moors governments. You can even go back to what's called the 1913 French Protected Correspondence that was going back between France and the United States of America in 1913, where France was making arrangements with the United States of America saying, well, what are we gonna do about these Moors? France wanted to help the Moors somewhat, but once they realized the Moors wasn't waking up and France wasn't trying to wake them up, all the other European states said, man, don't worry about these Moors. So France said, okay, let's just get into trade and commerce. So from 1880 to 1956, the Moors hadn't woke up, because the Moors were selling each other out. You go back and look at the 1933 Resolution 75, where the Philadelphia Moors of the Moors Science Temple decided to write a document with Philadelphia to say that the Moors are now what? Former Moors. And if the Moors are now what? Americanized. Speedy Americanized former Moors. That was 1933. So the Moors have actually assisted the United States in our own subjugation. So by the time Mohammed V gets his independence, Mohammed V says, the same thing everybody else said. These Moors ain't worried about it. I ain't worried about it. I'm looking out for myself. Now, does that give Mohammed V the excuse to throw the Moors underneath the bus? No. He didn't have the human right or the authority to now take away someone else's human right. But you must understand something, Moors. We are part of the problem. It's enough blame to go around between Moroccan Moors and the colonists, i.e. the Americans. It's similar to the symbol of the yin and yang, right? The yin and yang symbol. That's Moroccans and Americans intertwined, right? We are intertwined and there's enough blame to go around. That's the yin and yang. We gotta share some of that blame on ourselves, but yet hold those others responsible for what they've done to further genocide us, because Moors simply suffer from cognitive dissonance. We didn't even know he was Moors. But yet, there's a lot of Moors that knew he was Moors, and they just sold out. They helped the colonists to undermine us, right? However, we still must underscore the fact of what Mohammed V did with the United States of America. Why is that? It's because Mohammed V and the Kingdom Morocco became a member state in December 1956. So if they became a member state in 1956, they understood the provisions of the Charter's mandates. The United States of America was also a member of the United Nations. They were recognized as a member state since 1945. So the Charter comes into full force in 1945. The United States of America is one of the original negotiating states of the Charter of 1945. Mohammed V and the King Morocco becomes a member state in 1956. So therefore, both of those member states were bound to the Charter itself and its 111 articles. So therefore, what they did by trying to throw the Moors underneath the bus by so-called, making it sound that the Moors were obsolete and without effect through an arrangement between the United States of America and the King Morocco, they wrote some correspondence proclaiming that they're striking the nationality of the Moor-Roccans in the West. That's an act of genocide. However, even though they set forth that arrangement, guess what? It became null and void immediately, and this is why they kept saying it's in part, because they knew they were doing what? Flirting with genocide. But let me show you something, Moors. You see what I got on the screen right now? This is the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, Article 103. This is very important for the Moors to understand what I'm about to say. You see, Article 103 says the following. "In the event of a conflict between the obligations of the members of the United Nations under the present charter and their obligations under any other international agreement, their obligations under the present charter shall prevail." Let me read it one more time. Article 103 of the Charter of the United Nations. "In the event of a conflict between the obligations of the members of the United Nations under the present charter and their obligations under any other international agreement, their obligation under the present charter shall prevail." What does that mean? That means if any state on planet Earth is doing something to supervise the impossibility of human rights, no matter what arrangement the United States of America and the Kingdom Morocco put together, if it infringes against international law and international law is based in human rights, then immediately that arrangement becomes null and void. Why? You see right here, Moors, you see this word "shall prevail"? You see, the United Nations Charter has a supremacy clause. I'll say it again. The United Nations Charter has a supremacy clause and is commonly known as Article 103. And it clearly states, I'll read it again. Article 103. "In the event of a conflict between the obligations of the members of the United Nations under the present charter and their obligations under any other international agreement, their obligations under the present charter shall prevail." In other words, the Charter shall prevail over any arrangement that violates human rights. Immediately, it struck from the record. The United States of America knew this. The King of Morocco knew this. But Mohammed V was so desperate to get into trade and commerce that he still took a chance on drafting arrangement with the United States of America. The United States of America knew that arrangement could not stand. They knew it. But why is the United States of America did that? You see, you gotta understand something, Moors. Your internal laws of your state are only applicable to your own nationals. The United States had internal laws, about the 13th Amendment, 14th Amendment, 15th Amendment, 1870 Naturalization Act, right? All of those internal laws subjugated the Moors and tried to make the Moors what? Americans. But that's called internal law. And internal law is subordinate to what? International law. So what was the supreme law of the land? It was the Moors treaties. So the United States of America needed the Sultan to go to a treaty, because the treaty, the treaty is supreme over the Constitution and it's, the treaty is supreme over any internal laws in the United States. They knew the 13th, 14th, 15th Amendment and the 1870 Naturalization Act was what? An arrangement that was subordinate to what? International law. And the only way they could sufficiently hold on to the Moors was to have an international law that gave them a right of claim over the land. And that international law treaty, i.e. contract, was the Act of Alder Serra's of 1906 and the Treaty of Madrid of 1880. So the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, is what the Sultan was gonna strike, right? So once the Sultan proclaimed he struck Article 15 of the Madrid Convention, that's the international law document the United States needed, because they could say, okay, that wasn't our internal law. That was international law that says we get to hold on to the Moors. So they felt confident in that moment. But they knew of an act that was called temporary, right? Contemporaneous, right? It was a contemporaneous act that they knew it could not stand. However, it gave them a little bit more time. Time for what? For the Moors finally to understand what the provisions were about regarding their own treaties in the Charter of the United Nations regarding self-determination and human rights. It took the Moors extra time. It took the Moors all the way from 1880 until February 28, 2021, to finally come back into statehood under self-determination. What happened on February 28, 2021? That was the date of ANPAC, Alonian Moors Parade in Monte, Colorado, declared their independence, signed the Constitution. Thereafter, we, after that ratification, we deposited it with the United Nations. And then we had a proclamation as well through our public inauguration, right, of May 1, 2021. So that was the first time in history of Moors where we became competent Moors. Shortly thereafter, ANPAC, acronym ANPAC, we then became parties to all the Moroccan treaties through an act of accession. Through our constitutional procedures, we passed bills through the House, right? The legislators over to the executive branch. Executive branch signed off on that bill and made us parties to all the Moors treaties. And then we did what? We deposited those treaties, along with our Constitution, our Declaration of Independence on the date of August 21, 2021. On August 21, 2021, was at that time where all of our treaties came into full force and effect, because once you deposit with the United Nations, once it's on the registration with them, the whole world has to take notice, because now the registrar and the secretary of the United Nations has to give notice to anybody else who's a party to those same contracts. The United Nations has to give notice to anybody who's a party to those same treaties. So the United States of America knows perfectly well that ANPAC as a sovereign state, Moroccan state, provincial state in the Empire Morocco, came into full force and effect no later than August 21, 2021, after we checked all the applicable boxes that's required under the Customs of International law. So therefore, going back to Mohammed V. Mohammed V was just looking out for himself, but yet he never had the right to throw the Moors underneath the bus, because Mohammed V, when he became a member of the United Nations, he understood Article 103. He knew that his arrangement he had in the United States of America could not stand, because it violated the Charter's provisions, right? Okay, now what else? What's that? Whilst it, why is the United States of America so desperate to keep the Moors in a shallow grave? Just because it's right here. See that flag? These are the five permanent members of the United Nations Security Council. They call them the P5. The United States of America knows that flag is what you call an ad hoc state flag. Ad hoc state flag. What does ad hoc mean? It's temporary. It's recognized as having a seat at the table, but it's ad hoc until what? The Moors wake up and proclaim themselves as being the sovereigns again. So right now, the United States is acting as administrator, the administrative authority in the Empire Morocco. So therefore, they have a right to display this flag on behalf of the Moors. They're acting as a power attorney over the Moors empire. So they've been speaking on behalf of the empire. But only one sovereign flag can represent a sovereign state. So they've been fighting hard, because they wanna keep that chair to keep white flag from being in that area. That flag, Moroccan flag, is the sovereign flag of the empire. And therefore, through what's called merger and acquisition. And merger and acquisition will happen with this flag, that's an ad hoc flag. Temporary status. Contemporaneous. It will be replaced by the Empire Morocco's flag, because there can only be one sovereign in the land. There's no such thing as two sovereign flags representing the same land. No such thing. So the United States has been fighting hard to make sure the Moors don't get their seat back. The United States got a lot invested into what's going on on planet Earth. It's global for them. The Moors be thinking micro. We be thinking about, how can I get out of a speeding ticket? The Moors gotta start thinking global. We're affecting the world. Whatever we do here is gonna ripple out across the planet and come back based upon reciprocity. So you have to understand, through a merger and acquisition, the United States flag cannot stand just in common sense perspective. You gotta understand what I'm saying. Common sense says, if in fact this is a colonial flag and we're trying to decolonize, that means the communist flag can't stand. It has to come down while the Empire Morocco's flag goes up, right? A communist flag gotta come down while the empire flag goes up. That represents who? The indigenous people who are now have self-determination, self-governance, right? Based upon the triple principle of the Act of Alder Serra's of 1906 that says what? First step is what? Sovereignty and independence. Second step is what? Interior domain. Third box is what? Economic liberty without any inequality. That's what that flag represents. The problem is, the Moors acquiesced and allowed the United States of America to continue to sit in a position of sovereignty. But they already know their status in Morocco was what? Privileged and dependent upon what? The sovereign. So what happened with Mohammed V? Mohammed V took that flag from the empire and took it over to the Kingdom Morocco and left the empire void of the flag. That way, the United States of America could turn around and proclaim the land as being the sovereign under that flag, because they said that Sultan allowed them to now say the land is 100% America. But even Americans knew better than that. That's why they kept saying "in part", because they knew it could not stand. They understood the provisions of the Charter. Article 103 says that "the Charter shall prevail over any other international agreements if in fact that international agreement supervenes the impossibility of human rights of the indigenous people." The United States said, okay, so we gonna do this in part and just ride this thing out to the Moors make a proper claim. Thus, the reason why they came up with Public Law 856 and said, they approve what? The relinquishment of extraterritoriality jurisdiction in Morocco. They said that August 1, 1956, because they know they gotta give up the jurisdiction. But then if you continue to read Public Law 856, it continues to say at what? At the appropriate date. If the President deems it appropriate. So it's on Joe Biden to sign off on Public Law 856 and relinquish jurisdiction. However, it's two parts to that. First things first, you gotta understand that sovereign Moors don't need the United States to do a dang-on thing. Our job is to recognize ourselves and get into self-determination of our own state status, to self-govern ourselves as Moroccans in Morocco. No one can ever question what we do, because we're Moors in Morocco. We're the sovereigns. So therefore, why is it that Joe Biden or whoever sitting in the office of President at the appropriate date needs to sign Public Law 856? It's because the federal government still needs to put together legislation or policies that says that the Moroccans are either Moor-Roccans and their states cannot be infringed against, because that's gotta be federal law or federal policy that's then handed down to what? To several 50 governors. The governors then need to understand, the federal government said, you can't do anything against the sovereignty of the Moroccan states. So therefore, the Moors on one hand, okay, listen. The Moors on one hand are instituting their states. The United States of America, right, has to sign off on Public Law 856. That way, the Moors and their states are not being what? Genocide, locked up, right? Harassed, abused, because the United States has already said, hey, you can't do nothing else against their, the Moore state status. But that's gotta trickle down from the top down to the governors and from the governors down to the mayors. From the mayor down to the chief of police and the sheriffs, et cetera. That's the FBI, CIA, homeland security. So the President who's at the pyramid at the top is the principal, the prince of power, right? P-R-I-N-I-C-A-P-A-L, right? Prince of power, right? That's probably right? The President at the top. All his power trickles down to all the departments, FBI, et cetera, homeland security, from a federal jurisdiction. From a federal jurisdiction, his power trickles down to what? The governors and their jurisdiction over their chartered states. Then from the governor, it trickles down to who? The mayors over each of the counties. And from the mayors on down to all the judges, all the citizens, the police, the sheriffs, et cetera. So it's a tier process. So if Biden doesn't sign it or whoever sitting in the office of President, then that means the governors are saying, well, the United States ain't signed nothing. So why should the governors worry about it? But in the meantime, the Moors are supposed to just keep doing their part, keep checking the boxes. The United States is under a lot of pressure. They know that. Why? Okay. Because everything they do better be in alignment to what? International law. No matter what arrangements they put together, it better not infringe against who? Moors and their Moore states. No matter what arrangements the United States of America has internal, it better not infringe against the rights of Moors. Or it's a violation of Article 103 all over again. And Article 103 is what? Supremacy clause, shall prevail. What shall prevail? The Charter. You gotta understand what I'm saying, all right? Okay. As the Moors know, always open up the Constitution as we start to get into our class. The Constitution is paramount. The Moors cannot enforce the Charter against the United States of America unless we have our own state to proclaim ourselves as the sovereigns in each of the territories. Without a Constitution, you have no state. Without the state, you can't now recognize the Charter. You can't recognize the Charter without a state, which means you can't enforce the Charter's provisions. The Charter provisions become moot to you if you're stateless. All these things line up, Moors. You gotta do one thing at a time in sequential order in order to enforce contracts. All right? So the Constitution is paramount for Moors, okay? As the Moors know, we're finally now starting to get into Chapter 7 of the Charter of the United Nations of 1945. And Chapter 7 is about action with respect to threats, to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression, right? So we're not gonna read that today. We're gonna try to finish up with the Declaration of Intervention that the United States Intergovernmental Organization wrote on behalf of Ukraine, all right? We'll try to finish that up. But the reason why I'm showing it to you is because as we start to finish up with the Declaration of Intervention the United States wrote on behalf of Ukraine, they're gonna start talking about this word "aggression", okay? So we're gonna start tying this in with the Charter versus with the United States. It's mentioning, there's a reason why the United States is mentioning the word aggression, okay? All right, so as a reminder, when I left off in Class 107, I was reading this title, right? So the title says, "The Genocide Convention Does Not Authorize A Contracting Party To Commit Aggression Against Another Contracting Party." Against another contracting party on the pretext of preventing or punishing genocide. So now the United States is starting to use these two words in the same sentence, aggression and genocide, right? Aggression. Aggression and genocide, the United States is teaching the Moors. How to put these two words together in the same sentence, right? Because words create sentences, sentences create paragraphs and paragraphs create what? Contracts, right? So we gotta learn how to enforce contracts, but we study the United States and see how they put these words together. Right? That when we learn how to bring a suit of genocide, okay? We understand the basic formalities of how to do that, that's the purpose of us going over Ukraine versus Russia. So we can learn the basics, no withdraw, he said, learn from the Europeans, so you can learn how to run government, then let's do that. Alright? Okay. Just a moment. Now. Before we start to read section twenty six of this Declaration of Intervention that the United States wrote on behalf of Ukraine. Let's first get an understanding, what what is aggression about? Right? Cause we already went over genocide, we read the genocide commission. Let's read about aggression, right? Cause the United States is invoking this, right? But why are they invoking it? Okay. Now you go back. To the Charter. Chapter seven, chapter seven, chapter seven is about acts of aggression. But it's really about what? Threats. Breaches. And acts of aggression, you see how I put those words together? Chapter seven is about threats, breaches and acts of aggression. Okay, so let's learn about. This word aggression. Because the United States is invoking this word aggression, let's see why they're doing that, right? Fair enough? Okay. Okay, what do I have up here on the board? This is the United Nations. Uh what they call the definition, okay? Definition of aggression, United Nations. Definition. Of aggression, they defined the word aggression, this came out in the year nineteen seventy four. Okay, nineteen seventy four, Moors, okay? Alright, so we're gonna read over this case of the United Nations, okay, United Nations. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and read over this. Uh definition. Because this is what you call customary international law, this is the definition of aggression, alright? Okay, no, no from the top.
Thirty-three fourteen, definition of aggression. The General Assembly, having considered the report of the Special Committee. On the question of defining aggression established pursuant to its resolution twenty-three thirty. Of eighteenth of December of nineteen sixty-seven, covering. The work of its seventh session held from eleventh March to twelfth of April nineteen seventy-four. Including the draft definition of aggression adopted by the Special Committee. By consensus and recommended for adoption by the General Assembly. Deeply convinced that the adoption of the definition of aggression. Would contribute to the strengthening of international peace and security. One approves the definition of aggression, the text of which is annexed to the present resolution. Two expresses its appreciation to the Special Committee on the question of defining aggression for its work. Which resulted in the elaboration of the definition of aggression. Three calls upon all states to refrain from all acts of aggression. And other uses of force contrary to the Charter of the United Nations. And the Declaration on Principles of International Law. Concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states in accordance with the Charter of the United Nations.
Alright, pause right there, okay, so section three. The United Nations does what? Calls upon all states. To refrain from all acts of aggression. And other use of force contrary to the Charter of the United Nations, right? So there can be no aggression according to the terms and conditions of the Charter of the United Nations. And there can be no acts of aggression regarding the declaration. On principles of international law concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states. In accordance with the Charter of the United Nations, so therefore. Now the Moors gotta look up what's called a declaration. On principles of international law concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states, right? So that's what you call Resolution twenty-six twenty-five. Alright, so pause right there, real quick. Okay, there you go. So resolution, this up here I have up here is called Resolution twenty-six twenty-five. About the Declaration on Principles of International Law concerning friendly relations. And cooperation among states in accordance with the Charter of the United Nations, we'll get back to that in a minute, okay? That's another UN uh resolution. On the definition of aggression, remember we're talking about aggression, so not now UN is tying the word aggression. With the Charter and another resolution called Resolution twenty-six twenty-five, alright? Okay, let's continue to read.
Number four, calls the attention of the Security Council to the definition of aggression. As set out below and recommends that it should, as appropriate, take account. Of that definition as guidance and determination in accordance with the Charter, the existence of an act of aggression. That was a uh uh two thousand three hundred nineteenth plenary meeting on fourteenth of December nineteen seventy-four.
Okay, thank you very much, no. So you see number four says what? Calls the intention of Security Council, that's the preamble. Of the definition of aggression as set out below and recommends that it should, as appropriate. Take account that definition as guidance and determination in accordance with the Charter. The existence of an act of aggression, right? So everything's based upon the Charter, the Charter is the foundation of international law. And letting the P five know, we, the General Assembly, came up with a definition of aggression. And they're tying all these things in, okay, we'll learn more about it as we continue to read, okay, now we get into the annex. What is an annex? That's the preamble, right? Okay, we're listening.
Annex, definition of aggression. The General Assembly, basing itself on the fact that one of the fundamental purposes of the United Nations. Is to maintain international peace and security. And to take effective collective measures for the prevention and removal of threats to the peace. And for the suppression of acts of aggression or other breaches of the peace. Recalling that the Security Council in accordance with Article thirty-nine of the Charter of the United Nations. Shall determine the existence of any threat to the peace breach of. The peace or act of aggression and shall make recommendations. Or decide what measures shall be taken in accordance with Articles forty-one and forty-two. To maintain or restore international peace and security. Recalling also the duty of states under the Charter. To settle their international disputes by peaceful means in order. Not to endanger international peace, security and justice. Bearing in mind that nothing in this definition shall be interpreted. As in any way affecting the scope of the provisions of the Charter. With respect to the functions and powers of the organs of the United Nations. Considering also that since aggression is the most serious and dangerous form of the illegal use of force. Being fraught in the conditions created by the existence of all types of weapons of mass destruction. With the possible threat of a world conflict and all its catastrophic consequences, aggression should be defined at the present stage. Reaffirming the duty of states not to use armed force to deprive peoples of their right. To self determination, freedom and independence or to disrupt territorial integrity. Reaffirming also that the territory of a state shall not be violated by being the object, even temporarily. Of military occupation or of other measures of force taken by another state. In contravention of the Charter. And that it shall not be the object of acquisition by another state resulting from such measures of the threat thereof. Reaffirming also the provisions of the Declaration on Principles of International Law. Concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states in accordance with the Charter of the United Nations. Convinced that the adoption of a definition of aggression ought to have the effect of deterring a potential aggressor. Would simplify the determination of acts of aggression. And the implementation of measures to suppress them. And would also facilitate the protection of the rights and lawful interests of and the rendering of assistance to. The victim. Believing that although the questions whether an act of aggression has been committed. Must be considered in the light of all the circumstances of each particular case. It is nevertheless desirable to formulate basic principles as guidance for such determination. Adopt the following definition of aggression, three.
Alright, thank you very much, let's go back and recap, what's what's very important here, Moors? As we're talking about aggression, well, who's talking about aggression? The United Nations, right? So they're defining aggression. And look what they threw into the annex, i.e. the preamble, listen, okay? Says right here, it says. At the top. Aggression, definition aggression also includes what? Reaffirming. The duty of states not to use armed force to deprive peoples of their right to self determination. Freedom and independence or to disrupt territorial integrity, you see that? That's about the rights and conditions, people while they're going through their varying stages of advancement. Getting into statehood, right, and decolonizing. And if the United States of America does an act of aggression, then it would fall directly under this annex, i.e. the preamble, right here says. Reaffirming the duty of states, what state? The United States of America, not to use armed force. To deprive people, what people? Moroccans of their right to self determination. Freedom and state independence or to disrupt territorial integrity of their state. You see that? Listen, then it continues on, reaffirming, next paragraph. Reaffirming also that the territory of a state shall not be violated by being the object. Even temporarily of military occupation or of other measures of force. Taken by another state in contravention of the Charter. And that it shall not be the object of acquisition by another state resulting from such measures of a threat thereof, what does that mean? The United States of America can't use the threat of still maintaining the land. While the Moors are going through an acquisition, so as we're decolonizing, the United States of America can't use aggression, abuse of force. To try to hold on to their colonialism, right, through their theory of imperialism. It's very important to understand, it's the definition of aggression. This is why they start off with the first paragraph to let you know who they're talking about in the second paragraph, right? So then it reconfirms, right, it says reaffirming, reaffirming also. This third paragraph, also provisions of the Declaration on Principles of International Law. Concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states in accordance with the Charter of the United Nations, right? So now they've invoked what? This this Declaration on the Principles of International Law. Concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states, they just mentioned that again, they mentioned it earlier, right? I took y'all to it, which is Resolution twenty-six twenty-five, right? Twenty-six twenty-five is about decolonization, it has provisions about decolonization. Right, so so real quick, let me scroll down. Right, so it has provisions about decolonization. Even when you look into its preamble, its annex, right? You look into the annex, I'm just scrolling down real quick, you look into the annex. And you start to understand quickly as you start to read, it will start to talk about decolonization, right? Okay. Right here. No, we'll say right here.
Convinced that the subject subjection of peoples to alien subjugation. Domination and exploitation constitutes a major obstacle. To the promotion of international peace and security. Convinced that the principle of equal rights and self determination of peoples. Constitutes a significant contribution to contemporary international law. And that its effective application is of paramount importance. For the promotion of friendly relations among states based on respect for the principle of sovereign equality. Convinced in consequence that any attempt aimed. At the partial or total disruption of the national unity. And territorial integrity of a state or country. Or at its political independence is incompatible with the purposes of the principles of the Charter.
Alright, pause right there, so these two paragraphs in the annex tells you a lot, right? It says convinced that this sub- subjection, right, convinced that the subjection of peoples to alien. Subjugation, domination, exploitation constitutes a major obstacle. To the promotion of international peace and security. Convinced that the principle of equal rights and self determination of peoples, self determination of Moors. Constitutes a significant contribution to contemporary international law. That its effective application is of paramount importance. For the promotion of friendly relations among states based upon respect for the principle of sovereign equality. So Moors have a right to sovereign equality because we're the natural inhabitants of the land, right? We're the indigenous people of the land, and it continues, says. Convinced in consequence that any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption. Of the national unity and territorial integrity of a state or country or its political independence. Is incompatible with the purposes of the principle of the Charter, you see that? So going back up, this is why the definition of of uh aggression is invoking. Resolution twenty-six twenty-five, alright, we'll learn more about that in the future, but wait a minute. Resolution twenty-six twenty-five. Is nothing but a continuation of Resolution fifteen fourteen. So Resolution fifteen fourteen came out in nineteen sixty. Right, came out in nineteen sixty, this particular is about what? Declaration on the granting of independence to colonial countries and people, so this is a decolonization. Resolution of fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty, and then right after that. Resolution twenty-six twenty-five came out in nineteen seventy, okay? Nineteen seventy. Nineteen seventy. Okay, right after that, what came out, okay? Then they had to come up with a definition on aggression, okay? On aggression, which is Resolution thirteen fourteen, definition of aggression. Nineteen seventy-four, but what's happened in nineteen seventy-four? Well, a lot of African states was decolonizing, wasn't they? As well as the Cold War was going on, don't get me wrong, the Cold War was going on as well, okay? So once we start to read this, it has eight, it has eight articles, just keep in mind. As we read this, this is what you call a hybrid resolution, it's a hybrid. Resolution, why do I say hybrid? Because on one hand, they're talking about, you can't have no act of aggression against who? Indigenous people going through their varying stages of advancement to get back in the statehood, that's one part. The second part is, hey, but at the same time, an act of aggression, just act of aggression, such as Russia versus Ukraine, that's an act of aggression. So it's a hybrid, okay? One part is for indigenous people, the other part is to make sure the scourge of war doesn't happen no more, okay? Alright, so now. Let's get into the articles, right, we're trying to define what is aggression, right? Why why are we defining aggression? Because the United States mentioned aggression. Because the word aggression is in the Charter, we gotta tie these things together, okay? Let's look at the eight articles, I'm listening.
Okay, Article one. Aggression is the use of armed force by a state against the sovereignty, territorial integrity. Or political independence of another state. Or in any other manner inconsistent with the Charter of the United Nations as set out in this definition. Explanatory note, in this definition, the term state in quotes. A is used without prejudice to questions of recognition. Or to whether a state is a member of the United Nations. B includes the concept of in quotes, group of states where appropriate.
Pause, okay, Article one, listen, Moors. You gotta really listen. Article one. Aggression is the use of armed force by a state. Against the sovereignty, territorial integrity or political independence of another state. Or in any other manner inconsistent with the Charter of the United Nations as set out in this definition. Alright, so it can be aggression against the sovereignty and territorial integrity and political independence of a Moore state, follow me? Listen to what they say about these two subsections. Listen to what they say about these two subsections. It says explanatory note. In this definition, the term state, capital S, under the definition of aggression, now they're talking state. Aggression against what? A state. Now listen to these two subsections. Listen carefully. A, is used without prejudice to questions of recognition or to whether a state is a member of the United Nations. And then B, includes the concept of a group of states where appropriate. Did you catch it? Did you catch it? Listen. Subsection A. The term state, capital S, A, is used without prejudice to questions of recognition. So the United States of America turn around and say, well, we don't recognize these Moroccan states. So we don't have to respect them if we didn't recognize them. So international law came out and say, this ain't about whether you recognize them or not. You better follow the principles of the Charter. And the Charter, Article one, section two says it's all about self-determination. Article fifty-five says it's about self-determination. Article seventy-three of the Charter talks about non-self-governing territories of the Moors coming back into what? Self-governance. And the only way to get in self-governance, you gotta have what? A state. So right here, under the definition of aggression, this A lets the United States of America know, because the United States of America is what? A colonist. Trying to maintain what? Colonialism. What else they're trying to maintain? Naturalization, right? Fourteenth Amendment. They've naturalized the Moors, they're trying to maintain naturalization and colonialism, right? Listen, section A. Explanatory note. In this definition, the term state, capital S, says A, is used without prejudice to questions of recognition. Or to whether a state, capital S, is a member of the United Nations. So the United States of America can't say, well, these Moors aren't a member of the United Nations. So we don't have to respect their so-called state rights. So international law says, that's irrelevant. Whether you recognize them or not is irrelevant. You perform an act of aggression, you gonna be held accountable. According to what? The principles of the Charter. See how international law is protecting Moors? Section B. Includes the concept of a group of states where appropriate. But what does that mean? Oh, you see how Africa had groups of states decolonizing, right? Right? But wait a minute. Let's make this more germane about what? Moors in the West. Okay, section B includes the concept of a group of states where appropriate. Okay, so wait a minute. Hold up. Bam. The Wazir Regional Council, right? Is a group of states, recognize Moroccan states. Right? One, two, three, four, five, six Moroccan states. Right? That's a group of states. Right? Now, let me take a quick moment to say congratulations to the Moroccan states that have not been recognized yet, but those Moroccan states have had their public inauguration, right? So I want to say congratulations to all the Moors out there that have now put together their constitution. You put together your ballots, you did your voting for your elected officials. Uh, you took your oath to the constitution and to your office. You had your public inauguration, and I know you're working with the WRC, you're working with the executive director. Uh, you're working with the IG, you're working with all the Wazirs of the WRC. So I want to say congratulations to you as you go through your varying stages of advancement to get to a point where you're a recognized state by the other member states in the empire Moroccan. So keep up the good work, okay? So in the meantime, these are recognized Moroccan states, and this list is gonna grow very fast. Right? Well, this'll be a dropdown. Next time you see this, probably in the next, uh, couple of weeks, you're gonna have some more state seals on here. Just keep that in mind Morse. Okay, we're growing, alright? So back to point. This is considered a group of states, okay? A group of states, and before I go back to the definition of aggression, for the Moors out there who want to get in touch with the WRC, uh, here's their contact information. Uh, knowledge is free at the WRC. Statehood is not, statehood is not for sale, okay? So please contact the WRC for free. Facebook is Wazir Council. Email is contact dot the WRC at gmail dot com. YouTube channel is Wazir Regional Council, and the website is coming soon, okay? So that's how you get in touch with these six groups of states, alright? Okay, let's go back over to definition. Okay Morse, so we're gonna go back and look at Article one again. Okay, this is very important Morse, this is this is probably the first time that Moors have ever read this, right? So let's take our time, right? There's no rush. Okay, we're, we're only behind schedule by about, uh, since nineteen forty-five, in the year twenty twenty-three, so there's no rush. We waited this long, right? Let's take our time and learn, right? Okay, so Article one, explanatory note, in this definition of term state, capital S, A, is used without prejudice to the question of recognition. So the United States of America cannot discriminate against us because we ain't been recognized by them. Right? And then goes on to say, or to whether a state is a member of the United Nations. So the United States of America cannot prejudice against us, right, says, because we're not a member. You see how they're making sure they cover these bases? The United Nations doing this? Section B says includes the concept of group of states where appropriate. So we got groups of states. The United States of America can't do nothing against our WRC, the Wazir Regional Council, right, and the convention we put together, which is a multilateral treaty amongst Moroccan states. You see that? Can be no act of aggression. That's, that should be understood, okay? Alright, Article two.
Article two. The first use of armed force by a state in contravention of the Charter shall constitute prima facie evidence of an act of aggression, although the Security Council may, in conformity with the Charter, conclude that a determination that an act of aggression has been committed would not be justified in the light of other relevant circumstances, including the fact that the acts concerned or their consequences are not of sufficient gravity.
Alright, so Article two. Says the first use of armed force by a state in contravention of the Charter shall constitute prima facie evidence of an act of aggression. Although the Security Council may, in conformity with the Charter, conclude that a determination that an act of aggression has been committed would not be justified in the light of the other relevant circumstances. Including the fact that the acts concerned or their consequences are not of sufficient gravity. So on first use of armed force, right, first use of armed force by state, what state? The United States of America, the colonists. Their first use of armed force against us is in Article two, right? So in other words, their first act is a violation. They no second or third time. It's the first time they do something to use what? Armed forces. Okay, let's define armed forces. Who's armed? Their police. Who's armed? Their sheriff. Who's armed? The bailiff, the cops inside, the, 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 when you go down there to the municipalities to see the magistrate, everybody's armed. It's a use of force because it's, everybody's armed. You go to a traffic stop, they're armed. They see your Moorish national tags on your vehicle from your Moroccan state. Not your frivolous tags on the Moorish Americans. I'm talking about the tags that's issued from the Moroccan state because Moorish Americans' tags are frivolous. They're patently frivolous. Meaning they have no power whatsoever. No authority for Moors to ride around in their MAC tags or any other tags. It's fake, Moors, that's the truth. If a Moroccan state, organic state, who has a constitution that's been ratified, deposited in the Nations, and then promulgated by the state, Moroccan state, then that state can issue state tags to that vehicle. That's the only way your tags become authorized. So if the cop pulls you over and he has weapons, he forces something on you, that's called armed forces. Because they're acting as a colonist in that moment to prevent you from exercising your state right of jurisdiction. Moors must understand, we're cohabitating with the Americans. Americans need to understand their jurisdiction regarding Moroccan nationals. That way, those Moroccan nationals that are on the registration of their Moroccan states shall be respected. And their lives are private. Sometimes the cops and sheriffs don't know that they're between fake Moorish American tags and authorized Moroccan national tags. They have to make sure that the governor, when the Moroccan states now get into cooperation with the governors, the United States of America, they issue notices from the council court that says, these Moroccan tags on the vehicles shall be respected. That's when the governor and everybody else gotta respect the tags on your vehicle. Until then, they won't recognize your tags because your own state didn't recognize the tags. Moors are riding around with these fake plates and your Moroccan state didn't recognize your tags. Morse, listen to what I'm saying. Tell me the name of the Moroccan state and its prime minister, its Sultan or Wazir of that state, which is the executive branch. Tell me the name of the legislative branch, Speaker of the House, the Sayaraha, another legislator. Tell me the name of the judge assisting the judicial branch of the three branches of government. Tell me the name of the Wazir Prime Minister, the head of state of your state, the executive branch issued you tags for your vehicle.
He didn't.
It ain't happening.
No.
Morse turn around and say, I got a right to divinity, it's my own right to do it. Okay, good luck with that. I just told you the answer to the test. Your Moroccan state has to recognize you and your Moroccan state gotta recognize the tags on your vehicle because the state issued you the tags. The Moors run around here talking about traveling and driving and, no, you still in their jurisdiction, ready to use the word drive or travel. You still in their jurisdiction as a Moor subject. That must be understood. Let's get back to point. Article three.
Article three. Any of the following acts regardless of a declaration of war shall subject to and in accordance with the provisions of Article two qualify as an act of aggression. A, the invasion or attack by the armed forces of a state of the territory of another state or any military occupation, however temporary, resulting from such invasion or attack or any annexation by the use of force of the territory of another state or part thereof. B, bombardment by the armed forces of a state against the territory of another state or the use of any weapons by a state against the territory of another state. C, the blockade of the ports or coast of a state by the armed forces of another state. C, an attack by the armed forces of a state on the land, sea, or air forces or marine or air fleets of another state. E, the use of armed forces of one state which are within the territory of another state with the agreement of the receiving state in contravention of the conditions provided for in the agreement or any extension of their presence in such territory beyond the termination of the agreement. F, the action of a state in allowing its territory which it has placed at the disposal of another state to be used by that other state for perpetrating an act of aggression against a third state. G, the sending by or on behalf of a state of armed bands, groups, irregulars, or mercenaries which carry out acts of armed forces against another state of such gravity as to amount to the acts listed above or its substantial involvement therein.
Alright, thank you very much. Go back to the top, try to cover this quickly. Alright, so Article three. Any of the following acts regardless of a declaration of war shall subject to and in accordance with the provisions of Article two qualify as an act of aggression. So, section A. The invasion or attack by the armed forces of a state of the territory of another state. So if the United States, right, section A. If the invasion or attack by the armed forces of the United States of the territory of a Moroccan state or any military occupation, however temporary, resulting from such invasion or attack or any annexation by the use of force of the territory of another state or part thereof. So annexation is what? That's colonialism, right? So the United States can't do nothing to continue to hold on to our land under use of force. It's outlawed. It's an act of aggression. An act of aggression is, is an act against the state and it's a human rights violation. Okay, section B. Bombardment by the armed forces of a state against the territory of another state or the use of any weapons by a state against the territory of another state. That's self-explanatory, right? C, the blockade of ports or coast of a state by the armed forces of another state. So the United States tried to block our ports, right? Port of entry. Like Moors trying to travel, they're trying to go by the state, trying to go to Mexico. Now they're trying to get back in. If you got Moroccan national identification because your Moroccan state recognizes you and gave you state ID, you can use that ID at the port. The United States can't block you because they try to block you with their armed forces. That's an act of aggression. Understand what I'm saying? Okay. Section D, an attack by the armed forces of a state on the land, sea, or air forces of a marine and air fleet of another state. E, the use of armed forces of one state which are within the territory of another state with the agreement of the receiving state in contravention of the conditions provided for in agreement of any extension of their presence in such territory beyond the termination of the agreement. Now that's a mouthful. What does that mean? Okay, if you allow a foreign state to have presence within your state but it's based upon arrangement. Once the receiving state, it says Moroccan state, says the United States is outlawing and welcome within your state, they must do what? Leave your state. Okay, so once the, once an agreement terminates, once an agreement terminates, the other state that had been welcomed to be a part of your territory has to now leave your territory. If they try to stay there in an act of aggression, then that's a violation of international law. Why is that provision important? Okay. Now the Moors go over Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Right? Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, and now you come down to Article what? Twenty-five, right? Come down to Article twenty-five. And Article twenty-five says what? This is where the provision comes in, the United States is very concerned about. Okay, note.
Article twenty-five. This treaty shall continue in force with the help of God for fifty years. After the expiration of which term, the treaty shall continue to be binding on both parties until one shall give twelve months notice to the other of an intention to abandon it. In which case, its operation shall cease at the end of the twelve months.
Okay. So if the Moors petition to abandon the treaty for whatever reason, right? And I'm not trying to insinuate that the Moors should do that. I'm just talking about, talking about hypothetically. Right? Hypothetically speaking, Article twenty-five with a bilateral treaty of peace and friendship is what gives the United States of America to remain in Morocco as a people, as Americans. However, for whatever unforeseen, unforeseen circumstances, the Moroccans petition to abandon the treaty or if the United States of America petitions to abandon the treaty, then it means the United States of America, after the twelve months, if we can't negotiate the terms, conditions, then the treaty automatically becomes expired twelve months after we petitioned to terminate. Or it becomes expired or terminated twelve months after they petitioned us to terminate the treaty. Okay, now, now let's go back to the definition of aggression. Okay, Article three, section E, E as an echo. The use of armed forces of one state which are within the territory of another state with the agreement of the receiving state, the Moroccan states of the receiving state in contravention of the conditions provided for in agreement of any extension of their presence in such territory beyond the termination of the agreement. It would be considered an act of aggression if they stayed and used force. It would be considered an act of aggression if they stayed and used force. That's a violation of international law, you see? That's important to understand. There's provisions for this stuff to protect Morse already, all right? Okay, section F. The action of a state is allowing its territory which it has placed at the disposal of another state to be used by that other state for perpetrating the act of aggression against a third state. What does that mean? Okay.
Occupying another territory so that you could.
Launch from there.
Yeah.
The United States has military bases all over planet Earth. They got over seven hundred and twenty military bases all over planet Earth, right? So, they're strategically placed in someone else's state so they can launch, right, and be a first responder. They can strike quickly against whatever they perceive to be an enemy state. So, therefore, if a state, right, a receiving state allows the United States of America as the sending state to have a base inside of the receiving state. Let's use Ukraine as an example. If the United States of America has a base inside of Ukraine or Ukraine is holding on to the United States weapons because their weapons are on lease, now the United States can enter into Ukraine and use Ukraine as a launching pad right into Russia. Okay, let's read again. F. The actions of a state in allowing its territory which it has placed at the disposal of another state to be used by that other state for perpetrating an act of aggression against a third state. You see? That's an act of aggression. If the United States launches from another state into a third state. So, they go from here to Ukraine, from Ukraine into Russia. That's a violation of section F. You see? Okay, section G. The sending by on behalf of a state of armed bands, groups, irregulars, or mercenaries which carry out acts of armed force against another state of such gravity as to amount to the acts listed above or substantial involvement therein. So, the United States, the sending, right, if the United States is a sending state by or on behalf of a state of armed bands, groups, irregulars, or mercenaries. The United States has mercenaries, right? One of their mercenary groups is called who? Blackwater. Right, Blackwater, one word, Blackwaters. That's a mercenary group, privatized. Well, if the United States sends that mercenary group to another state to do something to infringe against the rights of another state, the United States of America is held accountable for that for an act of what? Aggression. Okay, let's talk about Morse. If the United States does something to send mercenaries into our Moroccan state, that's an act of aggression because they sent mercenaries in to harass us. Privatized organizations such as Homeland Security. That's a mercenary. You understand what I'm saying? You see how international law is protecting Morse during their varying stages of advancement of getting into statehood? It's important to understand. Okay. All right, Article four. We broke that down, I think, pretty decent. Let's move on.
Article four. The acts enumerated above are not exhaustive and the Security Council may determine that other acts constitute aggression under the provisions of the Charter. Article five. One. No consideration of whatever nature, whether political, economic, military, or otherwise, may serve as a justification for aggression. Two. A war of aggression is a crime against international peace. Aggression gives rise to international responsibility. Three. No territorial acquisition or special advantage resulting from aggression is or shall be recognized as lawful.
Okay, so Article five. This subsection, um, let's just read all three. Okay, one. No consideration of whatever nature, whether political, economic, military, or otherwise, may serve as justification for aggression. So, the United States of America can't come up with no excuse as to why they're trying to prevent Morse from getting into statehood. They can't say, "What's a political problem?" They can't use that as excuse. "It's an economic problem and Morse gonna get in the way of our banking." Well, you can't use that excuse. You can't use military. These Morse are trying to control our military. You can't use that as excuse. Or what? Or otherwise. What's otherwise mean? That's a generic word, isn't it? Right? That's a catch-all word. Just means et cetera, in general, right? Right, let's take it from the top. Article five, number one. The consideration of whatever nature, whether political, economic, military, or otherwise, may serve as a justification for aggression. Number two. A war of aggression is a crime against the international peace. Aggression gives rise to international responsibility. Number three. No territory acquisition or special advantage resulting from aggression is or shall be recognized as lawful. So, anything they do against Morse during their varying stages of advancement cannot be considered lawful. Nothing they do and anything they do is notwithstanding. If it violates international law. More specifically, Moroccan law and international law. Because the United States of America is in Morocco. So, therefore, they're subject to Moroccan law. They've always known this. It's nothing new to them. It's just new to us. Let's continue. Article six. We got eight articles and this definition. Okay, here we go.
Article six. Nothing in this definition shall be construed as in any way enlarging or diminishing the scope of the Charter, including its provisions concerning cases in which the use of force is lawful. Article seven. Nothing in this definition and in particular Article three could in any way prejudice the right to self-determination, freedom, and independence and derived from the Charter, as derived from the Charter of peoples forcibly deprived of the right and referred to in the Declaration on Principles of International Law Concerning Friendly Relations and Cooperation Among States in accordance with the Charter of the United Nations. Particularly peoples under colonial and racist regimes or other forms of alien domination nor the right of these peoples to struggle to that end and to seek and receive support in accordance with the principles of the Charter and in conformity with the above-mentioned Declaration.
Y'all hear that? Please understand Article seven.
It's ironic that it's Article seven.
Article seven, circle seven. The Morse hear that. Chances are, it's the first time Morse are hearing Article seven under the definition of aggression because your Morse American teachers don't teach this. So, more than likely, it's your first time ever hearing these words, so please listen up. Respectfully speaking. Article seven is a doozy. Okay. Article seven under the definition of aggression. Nothing in this definition and in particular Article three could in any way prejudice the right of self-determination. What is self-determination? That's statehood for indigenous people, right? Self-determination of Morse. So, nothing can stop what your self-determination, freedom, and independence as derived from the Charter. So, where do we get our rights from Morse? We get our rights from our treaties. Our own self-determination constitution is backed up by what? The Charter. The Charter, Morse. The Charter has got our back, right? So, the Charter of these peoples forcibly, of the peoples forcibly deprived of their right and referred to in the Declaration on the Principles of International Law concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states. So, they mention this again, it's the third time. In accordance with the Charter, so these two themes work in harmony, of the United Nations. Particularly, listen, particularly peoples under colonial and racist regimes or other forms of alien domination nor the right of these people to struggle to that end and seek and receive support in accordance with the principles of the Charter and in conformity with the above-mentioned Declaration. International law is protecting indigenous people, i.e. Morse. Why is it that we as a people didn't know this? This has been out since nineteen seventy-four. Nineteen seventy-four. It's been forty-nine years. Going on fifty years since this came out. Article seven is protecting people of what? People, people who've been dealing with what? People under, under colonial and racist regimes. Well, why aren't the Morse Americans reading this?
Because you're reading, listening to the NAACP.
Exactly. The Morse Americans keep trying to read the Constitution of the United States of America. How, how? The Constitution don't have these words in it, Morse. You will not find your liberty in the Constitution, United States of America. You'll find it in international law. You gotta put the Constitution, United States of America, down and pick up international law. This must be understood. But you cannot enforce international law until you do what? Restore your Constitution based upon the territory you live in. Without the Constitution that establishes states, then you can't enforce international law because your Constitution, your state is the portal to get access to international law resolutions such as what we're reading. Why didn't the Morse know this? Why don't the so-called NAACP know this? Why don't all the black, negro spiritual leaders know this? They talking about, "They gonna march for the poor people's campaign." You got your mosque ministers out there keep talking about the black man this and the black man that. Why ain't the ministers reading international law out loud? If the ministers of the mosque are so serious about helping the black man, then the black man falls under this clause right here. Under colonial racist regimes, you keep saying the white man is so racist, then why aren't the ministers of the mosque reading international law and following the prescriptions of international law in order to do what? Decolonize. Oh, but people ain't interested in decolonization. They only interested in compensation. As long as the people stay in a status of subjugation, that means somebody get to maintain some compensation because people got pain. They looking for answers and they keep going to goals at the top of these pyramid schemes. So, therefore, if you talking about, you about Islam and you a Muslim, then you should know about Article seven because Article seven about Muslim. This is Islam, circle seven, Article seven. I'll read it again. Nothing in this definition and in particular Article three could in any way prejudice the right of self-determination, freedom, and independence as derived from the Charter of people forcibly deprived of their right and referred to in the Declaration of Principles of International Law concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states and accordance with the Charter of the United Nations. Particularly people under colonial and racist regimes or other forms of alien domination nor the right of these people to struggle to that end and to seek and receive support in accordance with the principles of Charter and in conformity with the above-mentioned Declaration. We could have received support from the UN. But unfortunately, we've been sold out as a people. And those days now behind us. We gotta move forward, Morse. We gotta put these so-called scholars and teachers that have got us on the wrong path. We gotta let them stay on that path. We gotta get on the right path as a people. We gotta get on the right path of international law. There's where you find your support if in fact you've been subjugated. If in fact you come under a regime of colonialism. Article seven says it right there. Seek who? The Charter members. The Morse kept saying, "Oh, we gonna get what? Help from what? The East." Okay, where's the East? I'll tell you where the East is. It's called West East. You know what's West East? Well, Morocco is the west, the far west. And you know what's east? It's called the United Nations Charter located on the east coast in Manhattan. Our salvation for our liberation. We could have got support from the United Nations because the United Nations headquarters is in the east. And Morse been looking for China to come help us. And guess where China is? At the United Nations Charter headquarters. No draw lead said that help was gonna come from the east and the east is the west east of the empire Morocco, commonly known as Manhattan. Where the United Nations headquarters is located. That's the east coast. You know how long this provision been out? Since nineteen seventy-four. This is shameful that we didn't know this. Let's continue. Last article.
Okay. Article eight. In their interpretation and application, the above provisions are interrelated and each provision should be construed in the context of the other provisions.
All right, so Article eight sums it up. It says all of these provisions, i.e. articles, are one, right? To protect who? Well, it's to protect against the scourge of war. But you've noticed they, they kept intermixing this about indigenous people that are going through varying stages of advancement to get back into statehood, i.e. self-governance, right? Independence, right? Because we're not supposed to be subjugated no more as aliens, right? So, keep this in mind based upon sequential order, all right? So, this was nineteen seventy-four when it came out with the definition, okay? So, they talked about the definition of aggression because that's in the Charter, chapter seven of the Charter. Then you going backwards in, in time. Now you have resolution twenty-six, twenty-five. They kept quoting this three times, okay? Of nineteen seventy, I'm going backwards, right? This is about protection of indigenous people as well, about subjugation, okay? Now you keep going backwards in time. Now we're talking nineteen sixty. They came out with resolution fifteen fourteen with about the Declaration of Granting of Independence to colonial countries and peoples, all right? Now wait a minute. Let's read. This is very important. Let's tie it into aggression because aggression is based upon this nineteen sixty, resolution fifteen fourteen. Aggression is based upon what? Resolution twenty-six, twenty-five. They talked about friendly relations, right? So, let's look at where it kind of sort of started in nineteen sixty, resolution fifteen fourteen. This is important for Morse to understand. We read it before. We will read it again because the United States was there when they was writing this in nineteen sixty. Okay. For the Morse Americans who never read this before, congratulations. Here we go. I'll listen.
Resolution adopted by the General Assembly fifteen fourteen, a declaration on the granting of independence to colonial countries and peoples. The General Assembly. Mindful of the determination proclaimed by the peoples of the world in the Charter of the United Nations to reaffirm faith in fundamental human rights, in the dignity and worth of the human person, in the equal rights of men and women and of nations large and small, and to promote social progress and better standards of life in larger freedom. Conscious of the need for the creation of conditions of stability and well-being and peaceful and friend relations based on respect for the principles of equal rights and self-determination of all peoples and of universal respect for and observance of human rights and fundamental freedoms for all without distinction as to race, sex, language, or religion. Recognizing the passionate yearning for freedom in all dependent peoples and the decisive role of such peoples in the att- and the decisive role of such peoples in the attainment of their independence.
Okay, so about Moors trying to get independence, let's continue.
Aware of the increasing conflicts resulting from the denial or of or impediments in the way of the freedom of such peoples which constitute a serious threat to world peace. Considering the important role of the United Nations is in assisting the movement for independence in trust and non-self-governing territories. Recognizing that the peoples of the world ardently desire the end of colonialism in all its manifestations.
Pause. Hold up. Let me ask the Moors a question as we're reading the annex, i.e. the preamble. Does this sound like the Doctors of Discovery to you? No. Does this sound like the Pope is holding back the Moors? No. Doesn't this sound like a decolonization resolution that came from the Charter? Yes. This is called solutions. Resolutions to solve the Moors' problems, but the Moors American teachers, i.e. all the rest of Negro, Black, and Color spiritual leaders, keep talking about the Pope. They keep talking about Doctors of Discovery. They keep talking about Pape Boles. They talk about everything as if there are nothing in place to assist us to get out of that old concept. That old paradigm gotta die with the old teachers because they don't know nothing else to talk about. They don't wanna go study nothing new. So they gonna keep blaming the colonists for all of our problems while the colonists is writing stuff like this. Recognizing that the peoples of the world ardently desire the end of colonialism in all its manifestation. Moors didn't write that?
No.
United Nations wrote that. For indigenous people, i.e. Moors. The Moors keep blaming the colonists and the colonists over here writing resolutions. To help Moors. This has gotta stop with these Moors American teachers keep blaming colonists when we need to put the emphasis on ourselves as Islam. You must know thyself. Let's continue.
Convinced that the continued existence of colonialism prevents the development of international economic cooperation, impedes the social, cultural, and economic development of dependent peoples, and militates against the United Nations ideal of universal peace. Affirming that peoples may, for their own ends, freely dispose of their natural wealth and resources without prejudice to any obligations arising out of international economic cooperation based upon the principle of mutual benefit and international law. Believing that the process of liberation is irresistible and irreversible and that in order to avoid serious crisis and end must be put to colonialism and all practices of segregation and discrimination associated therewith.
Pause. Now I wonder if the NAACP read that? I wonder if all of the ministers, right, rabbis, and everybody else that's overseeing these religious organizations who keep claiming they gonna have marches and praying for what? The Poor People Rally, the Poor People Watch, the Poor People's March. Right? Million Man March. Million Man March came out what? Nineteen ninety-six. This came out of what? Nineteen sixty. Why are we marching and praying when there's already laws in place to assist us? It's because those at the top of the pyramid scheme don't wanna give up that compensation. You see, there's no cure. There's no cure. There's no money in the cure. Those at the top wanna keep making compensation while the United Nations that's in the east have been sending subtle messages to the Moors. Here's your solutions to your problem. If you take the time to read. Start right here, believing.
Believing that the process of liberation is irresistible and irreversible and that in order to avoid serious crises and end must be put to colonialism and all practices of segregation and discrimination associated therewith. Welcoming the emergence in recent years of a large number of dependent territories into freedom and independence and recognizing the increasingly powerful trends towards freedom in such territories which have not yet attained independence. Convinced that all peoples have an inalienable right to complete freedom, the exercise of their sovereignty and the integrity of their national territory. Solemnly proclaims the necessity of bringing to a speedy and unconditional end colonialism in all its forms and manifestations.
Okay, so therefore we've gone on to preamble, i.e. the annex. And this word right here, right, let me read the sentence first. Convinced that all peoples have an inalienable right to complete freedom, the exercise of their sovereignty and integrity of their national territory. What defines a national territory? A state. Without the state, you cannot utilize international law as your remedy. So Moors have been what? Stateless. And this is why they keep running around talking about enforce the Constitution. You're trying to enforce the colonist constitution and you're begging for your own subjugation. You're supposed to put this down and pick up and restore your own national territory so you can put an end to colonialism. You keep asking the colonists to put an end to colonialism. Your job is self-determination, self-governance to put an end to colonialism and the United Nations will assist you in your affairs to put an end to colonialism. But it all started with the Moors. But instead, we've been sold out and told everybody to enforce the Constitution. We was going nowhere fast. We, we gotta put the elders to the back. There's only three things you can do in life. You can lead, follow, or get out the way. And those who keep saying enforce the Constitution need to get out the way. So those who want to actually lead and enforce international law through statehood can actually put an end to colonialism. That must be understood. Okay, let's get into the articles. Guess how many articles it is? Seven. All right. I'm listening.
And to this end declares that, one, the subjugation of peoples to alien subjugation, the subjection of peoples to alien subjugation, domination and exploitation constitutes a denial of fundamental human rights is contrary to the Charter of the United Nations and is an impediment to the promotion of world peace and cooperation. Two, all peoples have the right of self-determination. By virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status and freely pursue their economic, social, and cultural development. Three, inadequacy of political, economic, social, or educational preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. Four, all armed action or repressive measures of all kinds directed against dependent peoples shall cease in order to enable them to exercise peacefully and freely their right to complete independence and the integrity of their national territory shall be respected. Five, immediate steps shall be taken in trust and non-self-governing territories or all other territories which have not yet attained independence to transfer all powers to the peoples of those territories without any conditions or reservations in accordance with their freely expressed will and desire without any distinction as to race, creed, or color in order to enable them to enjoy complete independence and freedom. Any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of the national unity of the territorial integrity of a country is incompatible with the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations. Seven, all states shall observe faithfully and strictly the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and the Present Declaration on the Basis of Equality, Non-Interference in the Internal Affairs of All States, and Respect for the Sovereign Rights of All Peoples and Their Territory Integrity.
You see that, Moors? Seven articles. So you got Chapter Seven of the Charter talks about what? Breaches to the threat, breaches and threats to peace of acts of aggression. The United States is talking about acts of aggression. They know exactly what acts of aggression is because they're defining it in their Declaration of Intervention Regarding the Case of Ukraine Versus Russia. Then we go look up the actual definition, right, of aggression. And you start to see within it, it starts talking about colonialism. Right? Then we go back and look up Resolution twenty-six, twenty-five that talks about decolonization. Then we go backwards to the nineteen sixty Resolution fifteen fourteen that we just read. It's all about decolonization and respecting the sovereign authority of Moors. Right? As a people, why didn't we know this? That's the question I'm gonna keep asking over and over and over again. Why didn't we know this? This, this is important to understand. All right? So now we go back to the United States. Okay? Now. We're not gonna get to this today. I'm gonna save this for Class one oh nine, okay? I was hoping to finish this up. We'll certainly finish it in Class one oh nine. But you have to understand the title. The title says, "The Genocide Convention does not authorize a contracting party to commit aggression against another contracting party on the pretext of preventing or punishing genocide." Why is the United States talking like that? Okay, now you go to the actual contract. Because we're talking about aggression and genocide. Right? So what is this? This is a convention on the prevention and punishment on the crime of genocide. Did y'all notice in the title? It has two obligations. It's a hybrid obligation. Listen to me. This is a convention on the prevention of the crime of genocide, and this is also a convention on the punishment on the crime of genocide. So therefore, this particular convention is about states are supposed to actually help prevent genocide. Right? Okay, then you come down to Article three. And it says, "The following acts shall be punishable: genocide, conspiracy to commit genocide, direct and public incitement to commit genocide, D, attempt to commit genocide, and E, complicity in genocide." So therefore, the United States of America, who became a party to this, had two obligations. They supposed to prevent genocide, right? And also, the world's supposed to punish genocide if they see it. But the first obligation is simply what? Prevent. Okay, well, wait a minute. Time out. As we start to close out. As we start to close out. What do we have up here?
Treaty Madrid.
Treaty Madrid. Eighteen eighty. Article fifteen. Hey, the Moors, a right of protections in Morocco, right? So the right of protection, and the part of that protection was, the United States of America was protecting the Moors because the Moors were their subjects at the time. We were Moors subjects. We were under their jurisdiction. Right? But the Moors also had a right of protection to return where? The Moors could do what? Morocco could do what? Return to Morocco if they choose to be, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. What about the laws of the empire? Well, coming back to Moroccan government, the Morocco. Right? But the United States gets into a conspiracy and do what? They committed an act of genocide in part. With Mohammed the Fifth, the United States of America did what? They instituted something that, an arrangement that would strike all prescriptions relating to Moroccan nationality from the text of the Madrid Convention. Now, listen to me. The United States of America has obligations to do what? Listen, listen how I tied this in. Listen. The United States of America was having an obligation, because this came out in nineteen forty-eight, this convention. The United States had an obligation to do what? Prevent genocide. See that? Because this is a hybrid. It's prevention and punishment. So the United States of America, because of this convention, this is a worldly obligation. This is customary law. Right? Of international law. So the United States had an obligation to prevent genocide. But did they prevent genocide? Is that an act of preventing genocide?
No.
Or is that an act of genocide? Okay, if it's an act of genocide, then now you turn around and you look and say, okay, well, if that's an act of genocide, then that means it needs to be what? Punished. See what I'm saying? It's a hybrid. Guess who else needs to be punished? Okay, let's go back over to it. Okay. I can, I, I, I would say the Moroccan government that come and calls itself the Kingdom of Morocco. Because they also had an obligation to what? Prevent genocide. Or since the conventions are hybrid, they can now be punished for genocide. So my question to the King Morocco is that what did you do to prevent genocide? If you didn't go back and strike this from the record. If you didn't strike it, then now you held liable as an accomplice to the attempt of genocide. That must be understood. Right? And because of this, it's caused the United States of America to go into a hyperdrive. Because once this was signed between nineteen fifty-eight and nineteen fifty-nine, fifty-eight and fifty-nine, guess what started happening in the sixties? People started being assassinated. Two Kennedys got assassinated. Martin Luther King got assassinated. Right? Ilmael Chabas, i.e. Malcolm X, got assassinated. Because the United States said, this is America. This ain't Morocco no more. Because the Sultan said it ain't Morocco no more. Said, these Moors are not Moors no more. These Moors are Americans and this nationalist movement will stop now. And guess who was in charge of all this the whole time? J. Edgar Hoover. J. Edgar Hoover was the Director of the FBI from nineteen twenty-four until nineteen seventy-two. Director of the FBI. His main obligation was to stop all nationalist movements. So after the Sultan came out and threw the Moors underneath the bus, J. Edgar Hoover, that's all he needed to see. He doubled down on undermining the Moors. And he was willing to take out anybody who tried to help with a nationalist movement. Have you noticed nobody's been assassinated since J. Edgar Hoover left office? Noor Drahly was assassinated in nineteen twenty-nine. J. Edgar Hoover came into office nineteen twenty-four. The Black Panthers Party, any party start to rise up, J. Edgar Hoover was in office as Director of the FBI during that time, and all those groups went to jail or they got assassinated. And then after nineteen seventy-two, because J. Edgar Hoover died, nobody's been assassinated since. You think that's a coincidence? Once J. Edgar Hoover was gone, nobody else was threatened by assassination because J. Edgar Hoover more than likely, allegedly, was behind all of those unfortunate incidents. Just take that in. All right, so let's take it to the board as we close out. Charter of the United Nations, Chapter Seven, Articles thirty-nine through fifty-one. We'll start getting into that pretty soon. It's about action with respect to threats, to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression. So Article seven, Article seven is about what? Threats and breaches, right? And it's about acts of aggression. Okay? How to stop it, how to bring an end to it as a circle. Seven is a, coming to an end. Okay? How many days in the week? Seven. Right? How many days in a month? Seven. How many days in the year? Seven. Circle seven is coming to an end. This aggression is coming to an end. Listen. Drop down box. Drop down box. Acts of aggression, acts of genocide, acts of colonialism, acts of extraterritorial jurisdiction are what? Human rights crimes. And it all comes under aggression and genocide. All these terms are synonymous. All these terms come under colonialism. And colonialism is coming to an end in Morocco with a pen. I end with that. Islam.